All right, Judge Rosenfeldt, it's 8:15.
That's how we begin.
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to have the Commissioners, Mr. Melton, the Sheriff, and Engineer, come forward. Yeah, if you would. All right, and if all of you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and you may state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of my individual office in the County of Clay, the State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. It is 8:30. Happy New Year, everyone. I'll go ahead and call today's meeting of the first meeting of the year 2023 of the Clay County Board of Commissioners. Our first item on the agenda today is an approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item today is our employee recognitions. Today, we are recognizing Jolene Randcliffe. Is Jolene here? Do you want to move this, Steve? Jolene, today, we are recognizing you for 15 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done during that time. We surely appreciate it. Kathy, want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to mention Jolene's one of our, for 15 years, she's in a program area that has a lot of new nurses. So Jolene provides a lot of mentoring. She's in charge of watching all the changes. There's about seven programs she has to keep track of. Plus, she has a full caseload, so she is super busy. This is the area where we need, we're always needing more staff. We initially were in third floor when Jolene started, and we were in a small office area. Now we're on second, and quite a large area, and we're still growing. So Jolene's been an asset to the program, and we look forward to the next 15 years.
Janine Meyer. Janine, today, we're recognizing you for your 15 years of service to Clay County and our citizens. Thank you so much for the work that you've done during that time.
So Janine started out in our child welfare system, worked there for about five years, and the last 10 years has been a disability case manager in our home and community-based division. In addition, Janine is also our SSIS mentor, and so that's our software system that our staff use in social services. So she's always troubleshooting and very supportive of our staff when they're running into issues. And, you know, when I think of Janine, I think of, there's many great qualities I appreciate in her work. One that stands out the most to me is she's always on top of things, getting her work done as an independent worker, and I can count on her to help out as needed. So thank you, Janine, and congratulations.
Commissioner Campbell. Yeah? Well, I think when Kevin started with the county, his hair was maybe as dark as I. And I've learned over the last eight years that that needs to come from a box more often than not. So I appreciate that. Kevin, today, we are recognizing you for your 20 years of service to Clay County and our citizens. Thank you so much for all that you've done while being on the county board. I know your service to Clay County extends far beyond your time here as a township supervisor, but very active person in a lot of different areas. So thank you so much, Kevin. Steve, do you want to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you, as you mentioned, we're extremely fortunate to have such a strong advocate for the citizens of Clay County. But not only for the citizens of Clay County, but advocate for us as employees. Mr. Campbell knows values our employees, and we're fortunate to have a servant leader that we too, that we do have through him. Also, through that, with 20 years comes a lot of knowledge. We have a lot of institutional knowledge. From a modern, from a modern board standpoint, it's amazing that each time that I'm in a committee assignment with him or a board meeting, that knowledge that we have, the recollection of why the board made the decision, and you can't, you can't replace that. And so we're just very fortunate, and congratulations on your 20 years.
Thank you.
Daniel Heising. Daniel, today, we're recognizing you for 20 years of service to Clay County and our citizens in the correctional facility. We certainly appreciate all the work that you've done during your time.
Thank you very much, Dan. It has been an absolute pleasure working for you for all of these 20 years. I'm going to start to cry. Dan was my partner for many of those 20 years, so I thoroughly enjoyed all of the knowledge that he has shared with not only myself, but with many of the people that I work with or that we both work with over at the jail. He was our defensive tactics for many years. He was the instructor for that. Along with being our overcrowding officer, he helped shuffle many of the inmates that we had to house out of county for those several years that we were, and that was a very challenging duty that he had to, had to lead. There were so many other things that we truly appreciate, Dan, but the most thing is just being able to work with him and enjoy his company while we work together over at the jail. Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much.
And Karen Hellam. Karen, today, we're recognizing you for 30 years of service to Clay County. Thank you so much for your work during that time. We really appreciate all that you do.
Well, Karen asked that I keep this short and sweet, so that's what I'll do. She started here in 1993 as an eligibility worker, and for the past 28 years has worked as a licenser. She primarily works with child, I'm sorry, family childcare, and recently has also started working with our corporate foster care homes. The amount of knowledge and experience that she brings to the licensing division is just immeasurable. Everyone loves working with Karen. She's a great resource and advocate for her providers. Congratulations, Karen, and thank you for your service.
Citizens to be heard today. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board on anything that is not on the agenda? Yes. Why don't you come on up to the microphone? Make sure it's green. State who you are. You're on the agenda? Are you Frederick? Okay, Frederick, we will hear your item at 9:20. Thank you. No, that's fine. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board on anything not on the agenda? Steve, have we had any online correspondents to address the board?
I've not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
No move.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to pay the bills.
A second.
A second from Commissioner Krabinoff. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from the December 20th, 2022, meeting were in the packet.
Move approval.
Motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two today is the State of the County address for 2023. Good morning and Happy New Year to you all. On behalf of the Clay County Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank you for allowing us to continue to serve the citizens of Clay County. I would also like to extend a warm welcome to Commissioner Paul Krabinoff, who took his oath of office this morning. Throughout the past 12 months, Clay County has experienced continual change, challenges, opportunities, and growth. While dealing with the ongoing remnants of COVID-19 and workforce challenges, there have been opportunities like record-low unemployment, recruiting additional childcare providers, and county facility upgrades. Clay County remains dedicated to meeting the growing demand for services. The County Recorder's Office continues to undertake projects to increase efficiency and consistency in real estate recording. A new parcel management program was implemented to help maintain a database of parcel numbers and the correlating legal description. This program will help keep the indexing of our records consistent for the real estate professionals that access the recorded documents. The office continues to see an increase in the electronic submission of documents for real estate recording. The Recorder's Office continues to issue birth and death certificates for the state and marriage records. These records assist individuals in obtaining their real ID, which will be needed in May of 2025 to board domestic flights and access certain federal facilities. Local Board of Review and open book meetings were conducted for the 2022 assessment involving classifications and valuations of approximately 2,400 parcels. In June, the County Board of Review was completed for taxpayers. The setting of valuations, which was supported, was completed by the State Board of Equalization through the Minnesota Department of Revenue. In May, county appraisal personnel started work in the following jurisdictions: Elkton, Elmwood, Felton, Georgetown, Hagan, Keene, Park, and Viding, and the cities of Felton and Georgetown. Appraisals also reviewed zoning certificates and building permits for new construction. There was an overall decrease in the number of recorded valid sales compared to the last year, but the sales prices were strong for agricultural acreage and rural and urban residential properties. The assessor and staff continued to work diligently on all programs offered to taxpayers while meeting the state requirements and deadlines. Planning and zoning. In 2022, 2022 represented another busy year for the planning and zoning department. The department approved 166 building permits, 29 use permits, 13 variances, 30 minor subdivisions, and one major subdivision. After significant work and input, Clay County adopted the 2045 Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. This plan will guide use and development in Clay County over the next 20 years. The plan established goals and objectives based on a vision for the county that was developed with input from citizens, elected officials, and other key stakeholders. The plan highlights the value that Clay County places on existing rural and agricultural character while ensuring a thoughtful, balanced approach to growth and development in the years to come. It further recognizes the importance of its agriculture and natural resources while looking for new opportunities to support economic vitality. Clay County will promote sound planning principles that foster economic, environmental, and community resiliency to ensure that Clay County thrives into 2045 and beyond. Clay County Public Health continues to serve all residents of Clay County in multiple ways, including statutory requirement to respond to all infectious diseases. In 2022, they provided 1,674 COVID primary series and boosters and distributed 10,000 COVID-19 test kits throughout the county. The impact of influenza virus and RSV this past fall and winter has caused a significant surge in respiratory illness for children and adults. The Public Health Department added a public health diversity, equity, and inclusion employee who worked with community organizations and diverse populations. This outreach allowed for increased outreach, education, and services to new American and BIPOC citizens. Mental health and suicide prevention continues to be a focal point of public health's efforts. They partnered with our multiple school districts to support Student-Peer Suicide Prevention Program, updated community-wide use of the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale materials with the new 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Clay County Public Health was also the recipient of a five-year grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services to raise positive community norms in the DGF community, strategic planning designed to lower underage alcohol and nicotine use. Our Substance Use Crisis Center is a 16-bed substance use crisis center that has served over 1,300 clients from 32 counties. In 2022, Clay County secured a $5 million grant from the State of Minnesota to use towards construction of a new substance use crisis center. This facility will continue the essential work of meeting the needs of those with chemical challenges. The 32 facility, 32-bed facility, is set to break ground in May of this upcoming year with completion scheduled for the fall of 2024. Clay County Social Services administers over 40 different state and federal programs for families and individuals. The demand for these services saw an increase in most programs for 2022. The State of Minnesota has launched an online application called Min Benefits for some of the state and federal public assistance programs that the county administers. Citizens that wish to apply for food support, cash grants, housing support, and childcare can now apply when it's convenient to their families. The department has worked hard this past year with the help of American Rescue Plan Act funds to increase our childcare and foster care licensed homes. They have offered incentives, waived fees, increased training and recruitment efforts. In addition, they have successfully secured a small grant to hire a childcare project manager aimed at increasing the childcare capacity and moving community projects forward. Understand that having quality, affordable childcare is imperative for sustainable growth in Clay County. Ensuring our citizens' mental health concerns can be addressed continues to be a huge priority. The Mental Health Crisis Response Program, which helps coordinate a response for citizens who call law enforcement in a mental health crisis, received grant funding to continue to provide this vital service into 2023. The County Attorney's Office Services continue to be in very high demand, both with the public and internal needs of the county. In addition to prosecuting all the county cases, they draft contracts and review all county legal documents. They also work closely with social services representing the state in both child and adult cases. The Sheriff's Office has had another busy year. With call for service continuing to increase, K-9 Maverick was added to the Sheriff's Office. He and his handler were patrol certified in June. Our two Canines, Goose and Maverick, are certainly the top dogs on the ground. The Correctional Center hired Carrie Tooten as the jail administrator and Katie Johnson as the assistant jail administrator in 2022. The Correctional Center was able to bring back several programs post-COVID. The Clay County Work Detail Program collaborated this summer and fall with communities providing various services and preparing for community celebrations. The Heart of Clay Correctional Ministry Program comprised of wonderful volunteers are also back helping those in our facility. We continue to be very grateful for the ongoing support of law enforcement from our citizens. As Minnesota counties have been seeing a crisis in terms of juvenile placement options across the state, West Central Regional Juvenile Center has been able to meet the needs of Clay County as well as the 10 other member counties. With the continued support from the county, the services offered at West Central Regional Juvenile Center have become sought after across the state. The West Central Regional Juvenile Center continues to have strong ties with the Morehead Public School District and a vast array of specialty providers to meet the unique, complex challenges of our at-risk youth. Clay County continues to provide, contract rather, with the Minnesota Department of Corrections to provide probation services to all juvenile offenders in Clay County as well as adult misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor offenders. Community supervision has seen an increase in the number of individuals court-ordered under community supervision. Drug and Veterans Court continues to play an important role in Clay County, serving 21 clients this past year with a goal of changing lives and breaking the cycle of incarceration. In 2023, probation personnel will facilitate a victim impact panel quarterly and an evidence-based youth chemical education course, understanding that education is key in reducing recidivism. While meeting the technology needs of our employees is a main duty, security has been a top priority for our Technology Services Department this year. Their organization underwent a major edge protection refresh, introduced more thorough client protection, and contracted with the State of Minnesota's MNIT's Vulnerability Monitoring Services. This paves way for new ideology on how they handle and respond to threats throughout the county. By doing so, Clay County consistently improves its security baseline for its employees and taxpayers. The Clay County website averaged, received an average of 80,000 visits each month in 2022 and remains an important tool to disseminate information to our citizens. Staff worked diligently to ensure the information on the website was current and accurate. Look for a redesign of this website in 2023, which will enhance accessibility and userability for users. After the 2020 census, a redistricting of Commissioner District boundaries was required to balance the population between the five districts. Clay County staff to use census data in our geographic information system to ensure this redistricting was done in a fairly, accurately, efficiently, and transparently as possible. Geographic Information System, GIS, staff continue to work on creating better ways of delivering information to a variety of users. Upcoming projects include an emergency management online mapping hub, an updated system for land records, workflow, and a facilities management system, also a, the ability to provide data for next-generation 911. The Auditor Treasurer Office is responsible for the collection of taxes, distribution of revenues, classifying tax assessment ratings, paying the county bills, county payroll, and certifying that our accounting process meets the government's standard of acceptable practices. The Minnesota State Auditor's Office presented its audit findings to the Clay County Board on December 27th in reference to the year ending December 31, 2021. The issuance of this audit report, the, in issuance of this audit report, the State Auditor has issued an unqualified opinion of the county's financial statements. This unqualified opinion confirms that Clay County's financial statements conform to the applicable accounting standards. The Clay County Board of Commissioners voted to continue to support a two-year tax abatement program for 2023 and 2024. Area cities and school districts in Clay County also have the ability to participate in this program. The tax abatement program has led to new home construction since 2012, providing competitive incentives for citizens to build and reside in Clay County. The Auditor Treasurer Office plays an important role with our election process. They expended a great deal of time and resources this fall to ensure the election process was run effectively. The 2022 election process witnessed three county commissioners, the Clay County Attorney, the County Sheriff, up for reelection. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Krabinoff, County Attorney Melton, and Sheriff Empting on their successful election bids. On behalf of this board, I would like to thank Jenna Kaylee for her leadership and work during her two-year service to the county. We wish her well. Human Resources had a very busy year serving our 620-plus employees. This department onboarded 125 new employees and processed 786 job applications, all responding to 59 citizen-concern inquiries. Along with employee relations, the HR department transitioned to a new HR payroll system, UKG, for its personnel and payroll tracking systems. This was a very large process that took many months and man-hours to complete. Under the direction of the Clay County Board of Commissioners, Human Resources helped implement an employee referral program and a CDL training reimbursement program in hopes of improving recruitment and retention. With the fluid state of workforce, the Clay County has had to adapt with new, to new recruiting ideas to attract new employees and to retain our talented workforce. Building, maintenance, and custodial staff continue to maintain, repair, and clean the county buildings. The Clay County Board of Commissioners approved a $4.2 million capital improvement bond to address multiple years of infrastructure project savings, saving tens of thousands of dollars to taxpayers in escalated project costs. Building, maintenance staff have been busy working on several of the improvement projects. Maintenance and custodial departments continue to evolve and expand their operations to new buildings off-campus and continue to maintain the county grounds. Our Solid Waste Department has gone through several changes this past year. Kirk Rosenberger retired in May. We would like to thank him for his work and dedication to the Clay County Solid Waste Program. Cory Bang has been hired as the new Solid Waste Manager. The new Resource Recovery Center is scheduled to open to the public on February 6, 2023. This facility will replace the current transfer station, provide a covered citizen drop-off, and an expanded household hazardous waste department, all in one location for citizen convenience. There will be a ribbon cutting and open house on January 31, 2023. This new facility has already created interest around the state with a conference space dedicated to community education programs and training opportunities with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. This facility will proudly serve the citizens of Clay County for decades to come. The Clay County Veterans Service Office has had another successful year meeting the needs of Clay County veterans. Due to the decrease in COVID cases, they were able to see more veterans face-to-face, continue their public outreach, which has allowed Clay County to maintain the status of zero homeless veterans. They also attended the national training in San Antonio, Texas. Personnel continue to participate and support Clay County's Veterans Court and the local Beyond the Yellow Ribbon organization. The Highway Department continues to maintain over 700 miles of county roads and another 875 miles of township roads. This past construction season, they were able to overlay over 20 miles of county-stated highway roads, with two of the projects being on the highest traffic roads of the county. Unpredicted snowfall, followed by a dry summer, provided challenges with maintaining road conditions. As part of our capital improvement bond, two highway shops As part of our capital improvement bond, two highway shops were replaced in the cities of Georgetown and Comstock, with the Yulin shop set to be complete this next year. I would like to acknowledge and thank past county engineer David Overbow for his dedicated years of service. We are grateful for the work that he gave the county during his tenure. In June, the Clay County Commission appointed Justin Sorem to be the next Clay County Highway Engineer. The Highway Department continues to work to ensure we have safe, quality roadways for the citizens of Clay County. 2022 also brought the retirement of our senior administrative assistant Colleen Eck. The board is grateful for the organization at work that Colleen provided the county during her career. The Minnesota State Auditor's Office reported on the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, that the County Board of Commissioners on December 27. In the issuance of the audit report, the state auditor has issued an unqualified opinion of the county's financial states or status, verifying the county conforms to the applicable accounting standards. I would like to extend a thank you to Lori Johnson and her department on another excellent audit report. And it was so important that I put it in the speech twice. The County Board recently adopted the annual operating budget and tax levy for the year 2023. The total expenses for 2023 are estimated to be $104,810,030. The revenue sources necessary to cover these expenses include a $40,539,278 property tax, state aids, numerous grants, services, and utilization of county fund balance. Clay County saw a net growth in new construction of 1.2%, leading to a net levy increase of 3.99% for 2023. In closing, the Clay County Board of Commissioners would like to thank our citizens for allowing us to serve in this capacity. It is such an honor. We are committed to providing the services that you have come to expect in the most efficient, cost-effective, and professional manner possible. We are committed to responding to your concerns and idea. To Frank, Kevin, David, and Jenna, I would like to recognize and express gratitude to you for your dedicated work and ongoing leadership over the past year. Paul, you have a long history of serving Clay County, and I look forward to working with you on this board. I am truly grateful to be part of this team. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge and extend appreciation for the amazing, ongoing work of all of our county employees. You are the ones doing the hard work, being the face of the county, and carrying out the strategic vision of this board. We appreciate you so much. Please feel free to contact any of the county commissioners or county administration at any time if you would like to share your feedback or suggestions. Thank you, and best wishes for a wonderful 2023. Okay. Item three today is the election of the 2023 Chair and Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I move to, I have Commissioner Gross serve as Chair for 2023.
There's a motion to appoint Commissioner Gross as the 2023 Chair.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Would you like to switch, Commissioner?
Well, first of all, thank you for electing me in. Hopefully, I can fulfill that job as well as Jenny did. I do want to comment on that. Jenny, you've done a wonderful job this past year in leading us through the whole year. It's just been a great job that you've done, and I hope I can just come a little closer to that, so.
Thank you, Francis.
Okay. And again, welcome, Paul. Welcome to the staff, and hopefully, we can be a fun group to work with. Okay, the next thing we've got on the agenda, I guess, is the appointment of Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we appoint Commissioner Ebinger as Vice Chair.
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell and a second by Commissioner Krabinoff to appoint Dave Ebinger as the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Post. All right. With that, we're going on to establish the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule for 2023. Normally, our meetings are the first four Tuesdays of every month at 8:30, and there's no regular meeting on the fifth Tuesdays of the month. One item I would like to bring forward is that on June 13, we got Board of Equalization, and that meeting will probably start at 5 o'clock with the Board of Equalization at 6:30. That'll be the only change that I've got right now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the Commission meeting schedule for 2023 with the addition as you explained.
I'll second it with a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
We also, don't we usually have our December meeting, too, that ends up being, do we know what, but we don't have the date on that one yet, I don't think, do we?
Commissioner Gross, Chair Gross, Commissioner Campbell, that's correct. I will look at changing that at a later date.
Okay.
I think there are probably some other dates we may have to change, too, when AMC meetings are and stuff like, we can do that later. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell. Make the motion, or?
Commissioner.
I seconded. Yep, no, that's okay.
I seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, with that, we move on to the designation of Resolutions 01 through 04 for newspaper destinations.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-01, designating the Record Review as the official county newspaper. In the packet, it does say 2022, so just clarify, that's 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner, motion and second by Commissioner Campbell to make the Barnsall Record Review for the designated Board of Commissioners for Clay County for the official county newspaper for 2023.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make a comment? Maybe this is maybe something for Commissioner Krabinoff to, and those out there. We typically, on these four resolutions, we do, we alter them from location to location each year, so there's a rotating, so ultimately, each entity will get an opportunity to serve or to print these different requirements that we have, so just want to make that point of clarification.
Okay, any further discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we go on to Resolution Number 2023-2.
Mr. Chair, I'd move Resolution 2023-02.
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Krabinoff to approve the extra.
I also would like to clarify, in the packet, it says 2022, it would be for 2023.
Thank you. The extra will be the notice of list of real property taxes and penalties for 2023. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 2023-03, which will resolve that the Holy Herald is hereby designated by the Clay County Board of Commissioners to publish the first printing of the Clay County Financial Statement.
Move the resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger, that the Holy Herald be designated as the newspaper for the Clay County Financial Statement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Next, we'll have Resolution 2023-04, be resolved that the Clay County Union hereby designate the Clay County Board of Commissioners to publish the second printing of the Clay County Financial Statement.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer to approve Resolution 2023-04.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a second, but we've got a motion by Commissioner, motion and second by Commissioner Ebinger for that resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, next thing we've got is review of the committee assignments. I think you've all got a copy of them. I don't know if you reviewed them before or not, but, I don't know if there's any change. Anybody want to delete some agendas or Commissioner meetings? Change, anybody?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a conflict with the Wild Rice Watershed District Meetings and Flood Reduction Meetings. I would like to, in, transfer that to Commissioner, and I believe Commissioner Krabinoff, because he's also the district liaison over, we can just shift that over. If you'd like to have it, Commissioner.
Be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just ask for clarification on that? On mine, I also show up as being that, so are there two of them?
I apologize. So that, yes, it looks as though we're all district liaisons. I misspoke, I apologize. On the Wild Rice Watershed and Buffalo River Watershed, I currently serve on the Advisory Board and just ditch coordinating of the Buffalo Watershed, and because of that was on both the planning committees for the Wild Rice Watershed. I have a conflict and cannot attend those meetings. I know Commissioner Frank, or Commissioner Gross typically goes to those, and he's on that, but we've had two in the past.
Okay, those meetings are 8:30 Wednesday, second Wednesday of the month at 8:30 in the morning at ADA. Okay, you want to be off that?
Yeah, you can keep me as the liaison because we're all liaison, but specifically that, and I know as they're doing their plan, that makes sense for someone to be there, too.
So we make Paul the alternate on that advisory board, okay? Any other changes to do?
Yeah, the Clay County Substance Abuse and Suicide Prevention Committee, both myself as a primary and Commissioner Krabinoff as the alternate, have got conflicts because of the Economic Development Commission. They meet at the same time, and Commissioner Krabinoff will have four occasions quarterly where he can't attend, and every month, as primary, I have been unable to attend that. If we cannot get a change of the timing on this from the Substance Abuse Committee, we're probably going to need two different commissioners on this to be able to attend their meetings because of the conflict.
When are those held?
It is the, let me look at my calendar right here, third Thursday of every month at 8:00 in the morning.
I initially was on that committee but had to get off of it because of the conflict. Commissioner Campbell and I would have the same conflict. Is that a committee where two are needed? I mean, we could talk that, too.
I, you know, Commissioner Kaylee and I managed to cover all the meetings with a couple of exceptions, but, you know, one could do it if it didn't conflict with everybody's schedule. I've spoken to county administrator about possibly seeing if they can change the date of the meeting. It's important to have a county commissioner there, but this is a picked a time that presents a number of conflicts to people in, on this commission, so.
What is that listed as on yours?
It's showing as Clay County Substance Abuse Committee. Now, it's the Clay County Substance Abuse and Suicide Prevention Committee.
Has there been any luck in looking at an alternative time?
Not to this point, but I certainly can reach out again here now after the new year.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, you know, I, it seems that this one, there's a conflict with a lot of us in being able to attend, and I think it's extremely important that we have commissioners be part of that, and I, you know, maybe for now, between now, and we usually don't finalize this till maybe next week, so I'm just wondering if we can reach out and just see if there couldn't be a change in the time of that meeting so that both commissioners, Ebinger and Krabinoff, would have an opportunity to be a part of that. It's an important committee for our county board to be a part of.
If they can't be on that, I can take that over. I mean, I have three Thursday mornings.
Okay.
Okay. If they can't move it.
Also, just a couple, and I think all of us have this, a couple of the committees that, to the best of my knowledge and my predecessor's knowledge, no longer operate. One of the things is the Minnesota-North Dakota Mutual Aid for Law Enforcement. That need for that committee was successfully concluded when the lawsuit against the deadly force policy that broke up our partnerships with our North Dakota law enforcement agencies brought our laws back into standard where North Dakota would back us up over here. So we no longer meet on that, as well as Mental Health Working Group. I think that's one of the areas that we have a lot of conflict between various commissioners serving in one capacity or another in the mental health area. This is one I know that has stopped meeting and can be removed from my portfolio.
Looks like you were the only one on that, too, right?
Yeah. I was, some of the participants on it, and they had a law enforcement function to a high degree, and some of the participants on it contacted me and wanted me to participate. They're no longer meeting.
Commissioner Ebinger, I would maybe caution us against getting rid of the Mental Health Working Group completely. I know that you and I have had discussions over the last year about the importance of mental health response in the crisis component, so maybe we could pivot the vision of that because that group has been meeting, Rhonda has been coordinating with our sheriff's office and Morehead Police Department about having that be like a crisis response committee.
Okay, if I can get notified on when the meetings are in place, this was something Pastor Sue at Churches United brought together, but if some of the participants there are still meeting, I would like to be part of that.
There are some pretty large challenges, as you know, with that group and securing funding. I know they're in the process of seeking additional funds, so I would maybe suggest that we just retitle what that is, and since with my portfolio having Lakeland being the crisis response, maybe we could have that Mental Health Working Group be part of both of those.
Also, in speaking to our county attorney, the Restorative Justice Advisory Committee is no longer functioning on a regular basis. We have Restorative Justice, but it's not meeting as a committee, and that's something we could remove. And I don't know if Veteran Services Advisory Committee meets. It's not on this list, but I've been serving as an alternate for Beyond It's not on this list, but I've been serving as an alternate for Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and if we could add that, I don't think we, and perhaps Commissioner Gross is familiar with it, do we still have a Veteran Service Advisory Committee meeting?
I haven't attended any of those.
Yeah.
Other than the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon I attended.
Commissioner Wayland said he, he does not recall that committee functioning in the last few years that he was on the, on the commission. And also.
I wonder, I wonder though if that, is that something that might has to, have to be there in statute? I don't, I don't know if there, some of those committees just have to, if you're, if you have one, if you have to have an advisor, or advisory board. I, I think before we eliminate some of those, I think we might want to just check to be sure that it's not a requirement as part of our having a Veteran Service Office.
Chair Gross, Commissioner Campbell, I can certainly reach out to Mr. Cannon on that.
Well, some of these, if we do delete it, we can add them again too, can't we?
And then just two more, the FM Diversion Public Outreach Committee, that, that committee has been merged into the Planning Committee, and the Public Outreach Committee is standing down uh, as part of the structuring with the diversion authority, so it, it no longer will be one.
Okay.
And the Correction Design Construction Operations Committee ceased to function, or ceased to meet once the correction facility was built a number of years ago, so that can be removed.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gross, Chair, Commissioner Ebinger, I do think a portion of that also had a dispatch committee on there, and is why we left it, uh, left it last year. I, I believe based on the board's actions over this, this, the previous year, we now have committee assignments for Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ebinger on, as the, on the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority, so we'll make that, make that change to cover, cover that. Okay?
And that concludes what I've been able to identify.
Mr. Chair, I, just going back to Commissioner Ebinger's, I, I noticed that we, it seems that we only have one person listed for this Morehead City Planning Commission that currently falls under Commissioner Kravenhoff's, and I, and I'd certainly like to see that stay there, but I, I just wonder if, if we have the ability to have an alternate um, for that. It's something that I think we'd probably first have to check to make sure that it meets with um, the guidelines of the city's planning commission, but I, you know, you know, in all fairness, some of those are important planning commission meetings, and if we can't have one of our commissioners attend, it'd be nice to have somebody else be able to be there.
Mr. Chair, I might also add a comment after that as well. I know when I first was elected to this board and had the planning commission for the county, felt it important to make sure that we had alternates in place because large scale decisions came to this board, and having an alternate not only provided a commissioner to be present in my absence, but also allowed an education component. So I would be um, very open to making sure we add an alternate onto that planning, the Morehead Planning Commission.
I, I agree, I just want to make, I just think we need to make sure though that it's, that it's allowed.
Well, it's, and too, it's a very small committee, and it may be challenging to reach a quorum if we don't have an alternate, if someone's not able to attend.
And I would be interested in that decision if it's available.
Yeah, I think if we could maybe pencil that in for him, and then maybe Steve can check with the city and make sure that there aren't any rules that state that we can't have an alternate.
And I would totally agree with that, support with Dave.
One more, I think we already, I've already discussed this with Steve, but I am the Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee for AMC, it was elected um, at the eight, last AMC meeting, so if we need to add that to my portfolio.
It's already on there and top of your list.
Yeah, I had that, and I guess that should cover it then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a few to go through.
Go ahead.
Obviously is no longer being Chair, past Chair, the Audit Investment would be lined out on mine, I think you're going to be coming forward with new ones on these. I, the, again, the Correctional and Dispatch, uh, one will go, will go away, the FM Diversion Authority Public Outreach will go away, uh, the FM Diversion Cemetery, I think that one also goes away, because I believe that's now going to also fall under the Planning Commission, so that one will also go away. The North Dakota Mutual, Minnesota Mutual Aid will go away. I will no longer be on the Personal Issues Committee as, and then the, the two that would be added would be the um, Diversion Authority Planning Commission, Planning Commission, and then also the Red River Regional Dispatch Board of Authority, would take the place of that correctional one.
Commissioner Campbell, we need to add the detox.
Oh, yes.
Yours.
Yes.
That's already been board approved.
And how are we describing that one?
Well, it's under my portfolio as detox planning committee, however, I believe we split off, Steve, I'm looking at you, split off, one was more construction based, one was more planning implementation for programming.
Programming, one was planning, programming and one was.
We'd need to add detox construction committee onto mine and Commissioner Campbell's, and then it did.
And the, and then. Programming was still on Commissioner Gross's.
Correct.
Right.
And with the board's, with the board's approval, we've talked about in the past of removing detox and using substance use, is that, would that be acceptable?
Fine.
Sure. Detox is easy to remember.
Any others?
Mr. Chair, I have a question, uh, maybe a comment. Is it um, too soon to remove the Minnesota-North Dakota Mutual Aid for Law Enforcement Committee? And the reason I say that is, that action came out very fast, and it was a knee jerk reaction for us to address it. I know that, that as state legislatures are convening today, um, is it appropriate to continue that? I know that's a challenge always, that's a challenge in air, components of our crisis response, having our um, emergency rooms in North Dakota. If, I don't think it's, it hurts anything to keep it, and I think it almost helps us if an, an issue comes up that two commissioners can respond.
That's, that's a valid observation, particularly in light of the mental health, uh, the absence of facilities on this side of the river. I think it is a, a moving target that we continue, uh, like, like so many, or unlike so many communities in outstate Minnesota, we don't have a mental health facility where our people in crisis can be left. Our officers have to go to North Dakota, so that's a situation that's ongoing, and I think it's a valid observation, it may be something we have to address.
I, I agree, I think that's, it might be worthy of keeping that there from the standpoint of um, if, if for nothing else, being able to um, meet to discuss how the funding mechanisms continue to work between, you know, now that they're back and working together, the different law enforcement agencies, there's always the funding component, and how we might be able to use that group to make sure that our state legislatures are aware of the needs. So I mean, it's, it probably does make sense, Commissioner Mojo, to, to keep those. We'll just have to work with the sheriff, I think, in establishing a time to meet and, and, and going over what some prior, priorities of that group could still work on. Not that we like more meetings, but.
It's going to be a big issue on the Public Safety Committee for AMC as well, since uh, mental health resources, both in the field and in correctional facilities and jails, are among our priorities.
Mr. Kravenoff, do you have any comment?
The only question I have, I can ask Commissioner Mojo on this one too, um, the interview process for cultural hire, is that ongoing?
Uh, that's a good question. That was a specific one that we dealt with because of funding.
Correct, and um, currently Commissioner, Commissioner Gross, Commissioner Kravenoff, we have, we've allotted some funds if the board's wishes were to move forward with the replacement of a cultural facility or allocate those, uh, some other, through, through some other funding resource of ARPA, and so while there currently aren't any meetings that go with that, if the board's wishes were to keep that there, that would be fine.
I guess if there's no meetings, I don't know what.
Yeah, I think we can, I think it, it's a valid point, we could remove it, and then when, if we have another funding request, we can.
Not only a funding request, but just the position in general, I, I think maybe we could go back to using uh, what our pick committee is designed to do, um, and maybe, maybe the current process involved with the interview process for that position, it's like, uh, the pick committee is often involved with uh, key hiring positions, so I would suggest that we just maybe refer that back to the pick committee um, to be handled. And that the pick, for those wondering, is a Personal Issues Committee. Personnel Issues Committee.
I know there's several committees on here where there's not an alternate assigned, so I don't know whether we need the alternate assigned to all of them or not, or, or we just choose if you can't make a meeting, um, ask for someone to sit in for you. I don't know if that's appropriate, do, do we need an alternate assigned to all these committees?
I think the decision in most of these cases has been by the board not to, to assign alternate, alternates to certain, certain committees, but uh, that would be up to the board, if they'd like to make that adjustment.
Okay.
Commissioner Gross? There are a couple clarifications on mine as well. The FM Diversion Cemetery is no longer a committee. I'd like to keep the FM Diversion Land Management on there, even though it's been said there likely won't be meetings because that will go towards the planning and also the MCC JPA, but on their calendar, it still is, uh, there's a hold on that um, meeting time, so I'd like to keep that if possible. I'm fine with removing the interview process, since we did bolster the cultural liaison in public health, that really is fulfilling that position. I have, also have a conflict with the, uh, where is it? The Felton Prairie Stewardship Committee, that is, usually only meets maybe once or twice annually, I'm Commissioner Gross's alternate, that would be an appropriate slide over to Commissioner Kravenoff's because of uh, the Wild Rice Watershed work. And then also, uh, I'm on the One Watershed, One Plan Committees, which is covering three different watersheds, and it is important to add that to Commissioner Kravenoff's as well, so he can attend the Wild Rice Watershed, One Watershed, One Planning Meetings.
Is that, is that a, would that be as an alternate, or would that, how does that work?
I believe it was, I'm not taking it off of mine, uh, because I still, I'm on the Buffalo Red Watershed, One Watershed, One, One Watershed, One Plan Committee, and the Otter Tail, it would just be adding the Wild Rice, One Watershed, One Plan.
But I, I, I think sometimes we need to, we need to understand within those, within those groups, the voting structure.
Agreed, Commissioner Gross, so the, the votes would then go to Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Kravenoff for the Wild Rice Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan.
But on the one you were just talking about, there is a separate one that says One Watershed, One Plan. Is that the one?
Yeah, and maybe, maybe the clarification needs to happen in my committee portfolio, so it would be the One Watershed, One Plan for the Buffalo Red River Watershed District, and the One Watershed, One Plan for the Otter Tail.
So, clarification, are you on both policy committees now?
I'm on three policy committees now, and I'm asking to take, keep two, take one to transfer to Commissioner Kravenoff.
Okay, and then, and then would that role be as a voting or an alternate?
Take it.
Okay.
At all, they're full, Commissioner Gross, and I had full voting for that.
Okay.
And it would change the two votes to Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell, or Kravenoff.
Yeah, I don't need another one.
And I'd be very interested in that with my background with.
Of course.
And I believe that covers. Just would then add the Mental Health Working Group that Commissioner Ebinger talked about earlier.
I think mine with the, the One Watershed, One Plan, it's listed there, but I think they have to be identified as Wild Rice and one as the Buffalo.
Right. So we'll add those caveats to yours, mine, and Commissioner Kravenoff's.
So that should be listed twice?
Yes. It's two different committees.
Yeah, okay.
And the board has only, made the, the decision to only appoint one to the Otter Tail, Commissioner Mojo, so that one would just have one.
Who's, who's on that, is Jenny on that?
Yes.
So you stay on that one then, or on the Otter Tail one? Okay. Very good. Any other changes?
Uh, just one question, if I may, so back to the, the Buffalo Red, who's the alternate on that policy then?
I believe that is... I thought it was only myself and Kevin Kastenberg.
No.
Uh, I'm, I'm an alternate on the water, Buffalo Red.
Right, but he's talking the One Watershed, One Plan.
Oh.
On the policy committee.
I might, let's clarify that over the next.
Okay. Okay. I think it's good to have separate people if there is an alternate.
Right.
I think if it comes to the wa, Buffalo, I think you could be the primary and I'd be the alternate, and comes to the Wild Rice, I could be primary, you be the alternate.
I, I think I'd rather not. I, I think my thoughts right now, even though I have a lot of background in the Buffalo Red too, but I just, however, um, I mean, tell me the background, your thoughts here, but I just think they're two very distinct, different watersheds, and I just don't, I think having that, in setting up the relationships that are on that policy board, I think maybe it would be helpful, they're separate.
I, I think that having your leadership with Commissioner Gross's on the Wild Rice is, is really important. Having just served as a manager on the Buffalo Red, it might be helpful to not be on that advi, if, if that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
To not be on that advisory right now, and I, I agree, I, I think you'll provide leadership in other areas that will help mold that, but I agree with, what you're saying.
Okay. Any other ones? Well, you got a week to review, and we'll go over these again next week, and you can give us an adjusted sheet next week and.
Mr. Chair, I, do we need to have a chamber representative, was that?
That, that was one of the things that we, that was.
We did in December, didn't we?
That was Greater Fargamar, I see.
Yeah, yep. That was an, an option that, that was going to be provided, was our understanding.
You say we need to have a chamber advisor?
Yes, yes, we do.
As we've directed the chamber to have a louder voice on the Minnesota side. As we've directed the chamber to have a louder voice on the Minnesota side, particularly in St. Paul and leading initiatives on this side, I think it's appropriate that we have a designation and an alternate, really. We do have some fairly large lobbying at the state that are coming in the next couple of years and having that voice and presence is important. Not sure when timings of those meetings are, but I certainly would be willing to serve on that committee. I think having as many voices on the chamber and EDC from this board is likely that helpful.
I attended the lobbying efforts with the chamber last year at the legislature and it was very effective. The chambers working with EDC, at times, as far as the, some of their combined efforts, I think we need some scrutiny on that, particularly in light of keeping Minnesota as a, as a, as a focus for their efforts. But the chamber has been extremely effective in working with our legislature. I too would like to have some role in that.
I, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's also important, I, and I too would have an interest in that. I'd have, my interest would be on, on how, you know, obviously the chamber advocates for things important within our community, but their primary focus is on business and a lot of the issues that come up with the state of Minnesota have to do with taxing issues. And, and that kind of falls kind of in my wheelhouse, I guess, so to speak. So if I could be of assistance in being able to work with research in that regard and, and put an emphasis on the needs of our local business community, I'd be more than willing to help out in that one any way possible. So I just throw that out there.
So right now we got three people that are interested in that, and we have to vote on that, or do we? Leave our magistrate or decide on who gets?
I think with, from, your, your position has been to have a discussion internally on appointments. So I think that we would want to continue that discussion to identify the two.
Very good. Yeah, go ahead.
Man, so I, I want to ask, so I'm not in conflict on anything here. So I've been on the chamber policy committee through the HBA for years and I was one of the original people on the flood task force. Should I remove myself from those duties? Is that in conflict, or do I stay as a participant of the HBA?
Well, the, the issue there could be is that if there, if there was two others that were appointed to that and you serve in the capacity that you had been, we would have a quorum at those meetings.
And, and that's fine. I'll, I'll take myself off that.
And I don't, I think let's, let's have more dialogue on that next week and come up with it.
Okay.
Just along that, that issue, I've already got a combined meeting with the executive board of the EDC and the chamber coming up this month. So there's going to be times where if we have two other people on the, on the chamber board, I'm going to be attending as an executive, part of the executive board for the EDC. And that's part of what we mandated in a retreat and the goals that we've set up is that we figure out this, what, what function the two units are going to do together.
Chair Gross, Commissioner Ebinger, are those posted meetings already?
The, the meetings?
Open meetings, are they considered open meetings?
Yeah, all of them have.
And, and in the case of a combined meeting such as that, if it would cause a quorum to happen, we certainly can advertise, we know far enough in advance. And because there are specific committees and committee structures, that's not a problem.
Well, I'm glad to see we have a committee that, that everybody wants to be on.
I'm interested in that, good deal.
Mr. Chair, I think having further discussion this week, particularly if there's a legislative focused committee or, I, I thought she gave us a structure of three different focuses of what their, their needs would be. Maybe that's the answer, is that there, there are separate committees within the umbrella of the chamber that we could have as many voices as possible.
I'll, I'll reach out to Shannon if that's the Board wishes this week. Go ahead, Paul.
Sorry, one more. And I just want to make sure this is in a conflict. So the other thing is in my real estate life, and I just want, if I need to back away, please, this is number one for me. So, the county board. So just making sure I'm on the, I've taken myself off the state board for the Realtors Association. However, I'm still on their legislative group. Is there any conflict with that? And, and my thoughts would be I want to stay close to that for perhaps of affordable housing, those type of things, that we can bring legislation possibly toward Clay County.
I think that's very appropriate to stay on.
Okay, thank you.
That's my opinion.
I can't conflict you out on that right now, but I guess we'd have to explore that if a certain thing came up. But I would agree with what Mr. Campbell said. I, I don't, I don't think it would present itself as a conflict immediately.
And because it's under a different umbrella, that wouldn't then be available to the county for reimbursement? And that's, we all have different hats that we wear.
Well, if anything comes up during the week, please bring that to the meeting next week and we'll discuss it some more.
So Jackie, you got all this stuff changed now?
All right. Okay, we won't vote on any of that this week, this time. With that, we'll go on to request to waive penalties for late payment of residential property taxes. Frederick Herring, if you want to come forward to the desk there and make sure it's on green there and. If you can give us some background on what's happening.
Sure. So, thank you very much for letting me attend this meeting. I didn't realize this was a service that was available to citizens of Clay County until I actually went to pay the taxes for my father. And I was told, you know, if you appeal this, you might, you might actually be able to talk to the commissioners about this problem. So in short, my father has been diagnosed with Alzheimer's and the management of our property at 28532 17th Avenue, South Lake Park, Minnesota, has become increasingly tough for me because my father still wants to maintain his rights to his checkbook and all the finances, yet he is not, he's not doing a good job and he is very close to not being able to make any decisions for himself. So my wife and I have had to become power of attorney over him and are faced with making all of his medical decisions, these types of things, yet he will not give up his checkbook. It's his last line of freedom. And we've tried to move all sorts of payments, credit card, electric bill, phone, all these things to automatic payment, yet he fights us on it, calls the bank, says, why don't I get a statement? I'm in charge. So we're in a gray zone with my father until he becomes worse and we, we are possibly, we're a little bit stuck in the middle of the situation. So doctors have, have suggested that we start approaching the guardianship process so that we will take full control over him. But he's not at that point yet. So we're, we're a little bit stuck. We can't make some of the decisions that we need to make regarding his finances, yet we can make others. So consequently, he makes a lot of mistakes. And one of those mistakes is not paying his taxes.
So do you have power attorney now, or?
We do, yes. And so I guess the, after going over this dilemma, I've thought that possibly the easiest solution would be, could we have the tax statements mailed to us in Fargo? We live in Fargo and he's at the farm. And if that is a possibility, could we get a duplicate statement mailed so we would always get it in time? Thus, we would never be late.
Is there a late penalty now?
There is a small late penalty. It's roughly $60, $58.73. But the problem that, that we see is that he intercepts his mail, he still gets his mail. And sometimes we will go for months at a time trying to figure out what has happened with his credit card statements, telephone statements. He throws them away, they disappear, we find them months later. And every time we try and work with him regarding this, he just says, no, 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 I'm in charge of my finances. I want my statements. Or he'll call the bank and the bank will say, oh, yes, we can send you your statements. So until things get worse with him and we can actually move him off of the farm, we're always making mistakes. And, or faced with mistakes. So that's our current situation. And I, I don't want him to be delinquent in his taxes. I don't, I don't want this to happen over and over. So maybe if there are some solutions that, if, if it would be as easy as us getting a duplicate statement in Fargo, we could easily get these things paid for on time. But that, I didn't realize this was this serious a, a problem. And when I did go to pay the taxes, again, I was, I was recommended that I talk with you folks.
Okay. So what is your recommendation today? What, you just want a duplicate copy or you want the penalty forgiven, or what?
If possible, it would nice, be nice to have the penalty forgiven this time. And I realize that that's a, a privilege. But it would be very nice to receive a duplicate tax statement at our Fargo address so we can keep on top of this.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, based on the, the agenda, the way it's listed here, it's a request to waive penalties. I believe that it has been shown that this meets the qualification standards that we have established before we even consider waiving our penalties. So at this point in time, my first motion would be to waive the current penalties on, on this property. And I'll follow up with another one.
Second the motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Mojo to waive the penalty of $60 something, you say it is?
$58.73.
$58.73. Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay.
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, in terms of his wanting to get a duplicate copy sent to him, I, I think what we're going to have to do is, is visit with Lori Johnson or somebody in the assessor's office and make sure of what the legal criteria are. And, and it might have to be that you're going to have to show some ownership authority in order, you know, we can't, just can't be starting to send duplicate property tax statements to somebody in some other town without some sort of evidence. Or so you, follow what I'm saying?
Yep, yep.
So, you know, so I think in the meantime, maybe what we can do would be to send this over to Lori or somebody in her staff and look at what the options are for you moving forward and then we can probably be in touch with you.
Okay. That's great.
Excuse me.
Frederick, thank you for your grace in dealing with your issue. I know this is challenging, I'm so sorry for that.
I, I did have one other question, maybe it's regarding guardianship. So I've never had to go through this process with a parent before and I don't really know some of the steps to take. So when his doctor tells me, you'd better start applying for a guardianship role, I've been told by people I need to talk to a judge. Is that something that Clay County, I would have to address a Clay County judge with? Or is, does, is there any, any idea or knowledge on that?
I could probably just talk to you offline and give you some suggestions, maybe attorneys you could either talk to. Typically, if, if they're not destitute, I mean, under like making less than $2,000, then you would use an independent attorney to start the guardianship process. There's a, there's a whole process that kind of puts you.
Okay, great. Great, thank you very much.
I might suggest in the interim, unfortunately, you don't want things to get worse, but sometimes it's easier in this situation. But if you go to our website, you can look up property, you have a property search. And so you can type in the parcel information, which I'm sure you have, and it will show the, the tax statement for the current year. And while you process the rest of it, it might be helpful for you to create a reminder on your phone before the 15th of May to look at that and see what that amount is. And it might be some more legwork for you, but at least you can have what the total is. And then in correspondence with the auditor's office, find out if it's been paid or not. But, but certainly hopeful for the best for you and your father.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate everybody's time. And I, I look forward to. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, with that, we'll go into committee reports. Commissioner Kravenoff, I guess you don't have any committee report yet?
Not yet, but I'm looking forward to giving some.
Okay, very good. Okay. But that will go on to the.
Thank you. Last week I attended the Transfer Station Construction Committee meeting that is working swiftly towards completion. You should have received a solid, or invitation to the ribbon cutting at the end of January. I'd like to make sure we get that on the calendar of events. But that's my only committee assignment. I do have, since my team decided to choke this year, this, this last week, and Commissioner Ebinger's seemed to have won, my son requested that I do this for Commissioner Campbell today. And so while there's not, there's not a good Minnesota, not a Minnesota team that I'm cheering for this week. I think we can all agree that a good quality land grant college is always a great option.
Camera, please.
Had I known this, I would have worn my Razorback jersey.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my reports.
That's sufficient, too.
I want equal time. There you go.
I might as well go online here now. I don't have to report to get at no meeting, so we'll just keep on moving down there.
Thank you. I have a, I had two meetings. I had the construction meeting that was, it's talked about by Commissioner Mojo. For a while there, we were anxiously awaiting the installation of our gas meter because, and up until then, it was costing us an extremely amount of money in propane. We got the good word, good news in that it was finally installed after that last meeting. So I think that was the major issue there. Then we also had a Prairie Lakes meeting on the 28th. And a few important issues there. We continued to have conversation about the PIFAs, PIFAS issues. And the MPCA had asked our, our entity to voluntarily do some testing, stack testing on our facility, along with the other waste or energy facilities in Minnesota. And we have taken the position, oh, I just have our hand looking at that. But we had a, we, we all agreed that it's at this point in time that we would, we elected not to go along with that. There's too many unknowns and too many variables to make a decision to do those stack tests. Based on some recommendation from the management, we did, we did go through again a second time the drug alcohol, drug and alcohol policy, which models along with what Otter Tail County currently has. currently has. And so we did approve that, that policy with probably some things that could potentially change based on what the state does in terms of anything that would come up with making things legal. Then we also had a update on an EPA SWIFER grant. There's a SWIFER grant that's due by February 15th and that basically is a lot of things that have to do with waste energy, solid waste landfills and there's, I think there's going to be three rounds, but this first round is due on February 15th. I'm not so sure. And part of these applications that go in for these grants, they can be done by cities, they can be done by, you know, any municipality or county. And so what we were wondering as a group and maybe, you know, maybe we can check with, for example, I'm not sure if the city of Moorhead or the city of Barnesville or anybody else might have some sort of an application for that SWIFER grant in, but I think it's important for us to know and in the event that we want to, want to apply for some of those grants that we're prioritizing, the most important project that could benefit, and typically what they like to see on these grants is benefit the region. So if, if we determine that right now there is no grants being requested out of Clay County, then it would be a little easier then for us to be able to support something that would come out of the Prairie Lakes solid waste, so the projects that would be done there. And I think we would have a fairly good chance of being successful in certain areas. And there are some things that are already been talked about that could qualify for those grants, but I don't know, Steve, if we could maybe just put a feeler out there to see if there's any, any of the entities that have made application to the SWIFER grant. And we also then, I had served on that, been on that board since we joined and we said goodbye to three board members that, who were retiring or who were defeated in the past election. And so we'll certainly miss Larry, Gary, and Betty. I guess I'll just put that out there. They were all very good commissioners to work with. That concludes my report.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Well, I had no committee meetings last week, the holidays, but in the spirit of Commissioner Mojo, woo pig sui, we won the Liberty Bowl in three overtimes after bleeding them by 30 points at the start of the fourth quarter, which I think they stole the Vikings' playbook, but we managed to pull it out and we got a great basketball season going. We're going to be in the big dance, I'll forecast that right now. So go Hogs.
I have a request, Steve. Can we please have that portion of Commissioner Mojo's wardrobe changed, be deleted from the video?
Maybe too late. It's out there. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pretty short report. I participated in the owners' meeting on the 27th. Also met with Lori Johnson that afternoon with some end of the year financial discussions. 28th, I had department head evaluations and also on the 30th, had a conversation with the concerned citizen in regards to our social service department. And with that concludes my report.
Okay.
I have one request.
Go ahead.
Bring in Darren's name. Darren, you had provided us with a salary grid. Can you update that for us on the grid as it's been changed now?
I'll have it for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I was just going to double check on that intergovernmental retreat Friday, Chamber of the 20th. That is at nine o'clock, not 8:30. So those are nine o'clock. Very good, okay. And where's that, at LEC? Okay, very good. Anybody else got anything? No? Okay, not, we're adjourned.